Uh, good evening and welcome to the October tenth. On the Mount Vernon Village School Board meet uh school, school board meeting. Uh, it's five thirty-two. Jess and I are struggling to get logged into our agenda pages, but uh we can navigate with. Mr. Berish, thank you all for coming. I know why most of you are here tonight and we'll get to that. Hopefully rather quickly, so bear with us as we do some um. Traditional housework. Uh, first, uh, public input number one of two. Our public comment procedure, we will take comment tonight from our virtual audience if we have any. If you wish to speak during the public comment session, we will allow in-person guests to speak first for three minutes. Once we go through all the in-person guests, we will open it up for virtual speakers on Zoom. In order to speak, please do the following, raise your virtual hand. Enter your name and your avatar profile when speaking, turn your camera on. And say your full name and town of residence. When these are complete, you will have three minutes to speak. Also, another um, a new addition to our opening is. Uh, please know that as we get into conversations around the building project at MVVS. Election season, budget season, and the March vote, I want to be clear. That all members can have their personal opinions on the board. Regarding school matters, but we want to be sure that the personal opinion stated. On personal social media platforms and accounts. And and outside of the board meeting are not a reflection necessarily of the board. I think it's a good practice for board members who post publicly to say something like. I am a member of the Mount Vernon School Board. These views represent my thoughts and not the views of the Mount's Mount Vernon School Board. We just want to make that clear that. Social media is part of our lifestyles now. Everybody can use them as they wish, but there should be some delineation between personal and the board. Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak for public input number one? Seeing none, Mr. Chamberlain, do we have anybody online? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Our next item is the consent agenda. Uh, the only item in it is the draft minutes from September eleventh board meeting. Do any of the board members have any questions regarding the draft minutes as presented? Okay. Also, we have in the consent agenda, we have the facilities report for September. The treasurer's report for September. The year enrollment data um from as of October first for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And then we also have a data report. Did the board have any questions or comments regarding any of those reports that we have received? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda. For the draft minutes, facility report, the treasurer's report, the enrollment data, and also the data report. Motion by Ms. Hinckley, second by Mr. Stokenger, all those in favor? Passes. I should make note tonight that Mr. George Torres could not be here due to work commitments, so that is why we're a board of four tonight. Uh, next agenda item for us is the number five committee updates. Um, I don't believe we had any. We talked over these last month, but I would assume we don't, but I will ask board members any committee updates.
That we, sorry, um, policy committee update is that we just received the fall twenty twenty-four. New Hampshire School Board Association. Policy updates, so um, those have been um, assigned out and we'll, we'll begin working through those upcoming meetings.
Thank you. Our next agenda item for tonight is uh, again, what I think most of people in our audience tonight are here for, and we're excited about as well. Is uh, our presentation from the uh Harriman. Architecture firm, but before we do that, Mr. Berry would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate you being here. Uh, it's an important night. You know, anytime we move into this venue, we always expect a little bit more of a. Of interest in the topics and 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 as we get into, as Pete said. Budget season, we start talking about the project, we start talking about election season. One of the things that I want to just make really clear with everybody that as an SAU. Uh, office and and representatives of the superintendent's office. What we do is we provide services to the school board of Mount Vernon and the town of Mount Vernon, and we are here to partner with the board. We serve at the pleasure of the board, we serve at the pleasure of the town. And what we do is do our administrative responsibilities. And at the end of the day, whether it's budget conversations or building conversations. We will always help inform and do the work and make presentations and invite guests in. But at the end of the day, we serve at the pleasure of the board. The board makes decisions on behalf of the school. And the district and the town as they partner with their representatives. And so for me, I want to be always very mindful of that. And and I joked with someone the other day, the superintendent is not raising taxes in Mount Vernon. It's not my decision. It's the board's decision and the selectmen board's decision. They, they make the decisions in town and and for us, we just want to work with you, partner with you and make sure that we have a school. That has a quality education that reflects the values of. The town of Mount Vernon that prevent produces students that can achieve at a high level when they move on to the next. Stage of their career, and we do that here very well in Mount Vernon. And so I do appreciate all the work that goes into this. Yeah, from the board, from Mr. Leckleider and and the staff here at MV. And all the people that support the school. And so tonight, representatives from Harriman will present conceptual drawings of the renovated village school board based on educational specifications. These options will serve as the center point for meetings ongoing with the faculty. The administration and the community of Mount Vernon as well as the board. Once Harriman receives input from the board, the faculty, community and other rendering will be reduced. If wanted, this presentation is the starting point, and I want to emphasize that of a project that continues to be developed. That will be decided upon as we move through this process. So I appreciate everyone being here and I welcome you guys to come up and present. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Chamberlain's kind of spearheaded um, the coordination of our, our building committee along with Mr. Stokenger from the board. So I'm going to let Steve introduce our, our representatives and guests tonight, and thank you.
And and just a little bit of context where we are. Um, there was an extensive committee to look at the middle school option, look at where we are. Um, that work went into a warrant article two years ago for sixty thousand dollars for a study. Um, we went through a vetting process to hire a firm. And in full transparency, from the time that this was discussed as a, as a, a middle school. Uh, on this campus, there were some other initiatives and some other efforts that joined in this study. One is taking a look at the facility and what kind of maintenance would be necessary over the near term. Another was to take a look at because of from our student services director, Meg Bochamp last year. And now Heather Jennings was to take a look at preschool because of the number of students that are getting related services through preschool. Is pretty close to Warrington and on-campus preschool. The other piece is through the NESDEC report. We saw a, an ex- uh, a significant increase in enrollment in preparing for that down the roll. So it's middle school, it's deferred maintenance. It, uh, maintenance that's planned, it's what, what would a preschool look like? And how do we handle an increased enrollment? The other piece that we asked Harriman to just take a look at. Is in this day and age, uh, is there a way to increase our security from the, the current sec- uh, entrance? So you will see option, and everyone is clear what, what Lisa and Jamie are going to show you are just options and they can be partitioned out. Right? So if we're not interested in the preschool, that's there. If we don't have to do the bubble, that's there. If we're not interested. So all these things can be partitioned out, but there is a comprehensive view of those five things. As we engage in the firm to do a comprehensive view of our facilities. So with that, uh, Jamie and Lisa, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working with you. We'll turn it over to you. And uh, we'll enjoy the presentation.
Good evening. Um, great to see so many folks. My name is Lisa Sawen. I'm an architect and principal at Harriman. We're an architecture and engineering firm. I lead our pre-K through twelve design studio and with me I have Jamie Olet, um, project manager and senior architect in our studio. Um, we are going to be, we're taking you through the presentation um, here. We're pulling it up on the screen right now. It's a little off-center, Steve. Okay. Well, we will try our best to walk you through the graphics as they come up on the screen, but um. So the agenda for tonight, we're going to take you through the facilities assessment overview. So one of the first things we were asked to do. Was walk the building and the grounds with our architects and engineers. And identify things that we saw need to be addressed, whether it be code items, whether it be educational items, whether it be maintenance items. Um, so Jamie's going to walk us through those in a little bit, what our team saw and what our recommendations were. Um, and then we also are working um, alongside the committee um, and building off of the ed specs that we were given. To look at the educational needs. And so you heard uh, already about the need for pre-K. Um, we're also studying bringing the seventh and eighth grade into this school and what would be needed to do that. So there are several options. We'll go over and look at that. Um, and then um, we'll talk about uh. Further community outreach. Again, this is a starting point. This is one of the first times people are, are hearing this and seeing this. And we'll talk about those next steps as well. So first is the facility assessment overview. And looks like you can see part of the screen. Wondering if you can move your window to the right. There you go. Perfect. All right, I'm going to hand it over to Jamie to walk through this.
Good evening, folks. Jamie Woollett. Um, so. We had um, a host of our engineering and architectural team members here. Uh, I think that was probably two or three months ago, perhaps. Um, sometime, I guess it was early in the. No, doesn't matter. It was, it was recently. Uh, and uh, we had civil engineers, uh, mechanical, plumbing, electrical engineers. Uh, architectural team members, structural engineers. Um, and so tonight we're going to present. Kind of some of those findings that we found. This isn't a super duper comprehensive list that we noted, but this is kind of hitting the high summary pieces and parts. So you'll notice here, this is a civil, civil review, so they walked around outside. Um, they were noticing ADA compliance uh, items such as landings at thresholds across uh, doorways as you exit the building, like around the exterior. Um, did not comply with ADA. Uh, you, and then we would, you know, we have a recommendation on the right side, so per, you know, the recommendation is to provide proper landings. Um, traffic patterns uh, around the school, vehicular and pedestrian. Um, could use some improvements. Uh, there was noting in some of the discussions we had. Uh, with the, with the, the school team that there's concerns about that at times, um, where there's congestion, uh, safety issues with, with traffic patterns. Um, paving, you can see in the right-hand corner there that the, the paving. Um, in some areas is in disrepair. Uh, you know, it's been patched and and sealed up occasionally, um, but it, it needs some additional attention. Uh, fall protection uh, under play equipment is, is not adequate for some of the heights of those uh, play areas, so. Looking at potentially adding additional uh, surface underneath it to help protect from falls. Uh, fencing around some of the play area has openings, so if you look around the playground area, there's areas where students could get out or unwanted visitors like. Pests and things could get in. Um, and so those are concerns. And then ADA access to the playground, although you can get there with a wheelchair. Um, it's, it, and it requires you to go out around the, the part, uh. Paved area, park, uh, walkway to get down and into the playground where everybody else just can go right down the stairway uh, to get right to the playground. We bring our structural team there. They, they noted that um, the building was built in three different eras, um. Nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen eighty-eight, and two thousand. Um, so you have a portion of this building is, that is nearly fifty, sixty years old or so. Um, and then so with a structural, they walked around, you could see the wood trusses up in the, in the right side and the, the framing that's in here, the wood trusses. Um, so they, they review the building and they, they make recommendations. Uh, but really the overall project, um, if there is one, they would have to redetermine what exactly is required. So we design kind of. Back and forth a little bit. If you, you know, if you're building, if you build a new addition as an example. That was taller than a certain roof, you have to consider snow loads on that existing roof. So. So some of those things weigh into the equation, so their recommendations are kind of limited to further review would be done upon. Um, upon an, on a certain addition or renovation that happened to a building. Because as the building stands, there's no required uh, updates that necessarily need to be made structurally as far what, as far as what they found. When you get to architectural, uh, our team found um, things, uh, we walked around the perimeter, walked around the interior. Um, and we're looking for things like ADA compliance, code compliance, safety and security. Exterior material conditions, exterior material conditions. Um, so some of those items are uh, vinyl siding was noted around some areas that were, were dented or, or, or excuse me, cracked and broken. Um, and and not, not, it's not widespread, but the areas that could use some repair to make sure we keep the weather out of the building. Uh, exterior doors and frames are found with rust and rust through, so a lot of times you're spreading salt at the bottom of the, of the ground to keep the ice from forming. Well, that salt eats away at metal doors and metal frames over time. Um, and so a lot of times it's either, depending on extensive of the, the st- extensive, is it, extensiveness of the deterioration. You may need to repair the, replace the per frame or, or you can repair them locally or keep them painted, you know, you want to keep them painted and, and, and protected. Um, egress door threshold, we talked about this at the site. Portion of it where you, you egress a door and you're, you're stepping right out immediately at that door. That's a safety concern for egress. Um, somebody could fall or trip, uh, and also ADA compliance, they, they're not able to make that threshold uh, transition. And then uh, interior finishes um, were in fair condition. I mean, you could see um, we have kind of a scale that's uh, critical. Uh, fair or poor, fair, uh, good and excellent. Um, the conditions in here are fair. Um, you know, you, you can see some of those finishes right in this space. Um, they work. Um, but they could use improvements. Um, you know, bring pride to, to students. Uh, and help, and help enhance uh, the building's aesthetics. So things like ceiling grids, they're starting to yellow in some areas. Um, there's some mismatched ceiling tiles, you know, not, nothing that's critical, but things that could be improved. Drywall finishes are, are actually in fair, fair to good condition, but it could use a fresh coat of paint. Um, flooring, um, some areas had mismatched or patched flooring tile. You can see in here, there's some ridges in the floor and things that you could use an update. A casework varied in condition. There were some that were in good condition. There were some areas that were, you know, original to the building and, and could use some replacement. Um, but again, overall in fair condition. Interior doors, they vary in age. You can see off to the right, there's some newer doors, some older doors. Um, but overall, they were in fair to good condition, depending on which doors you're looking at. They're mismatched, you know, you can tell the era of each building. Um, restroom finishes were notably in need of attention. Uh, not so much in the front here, this is newly been renovated, but in the back area where the, where the, the classrooms are. Um, they're, it's older finishes and, and they, they, you know, they look, they look their age. And then several code and ADA accessibility issues were noted. Um, corridor doors, they had corridor doors that were swinging in the wrong direction for proper. Um, entrance for somebody in a wheelchair. They don't have that clearance. They need a little space to be able to operate the door and be out of the way. Um, quarter and classroom doors, oh, that's a repeat. Um, the fire rated doors um, had uh, tags that were missing or, or like the, the UL rated, rated. Labels were missing or painted over, so you didn't know what the rating was, even though it's required uh, to be there. Um, protruding objects in the path of travel, so if somebody's walking down the hall, it may be visually impaired. Um, there is a requirement that an object can't stick out more than four inches and. Things like that where somebody could run into it if they can't really see it as, as a danger, and especially on, in an, an emergency when they, when a bunch of students are trying to egress or, or staff. Uh, that is a concern. Um, classroom doors were on hold opens that rated walls. Um, in some instances that is allowed, but under a, in a wood construction like this without sprinkler system. That is something that's of concern for code reasons. Uh, stored materials in front of electrical panels. A lot of these are easy things that can be remedied. Some of them are a little more major ADA compliance stuff is important and, and code compliance. Code compliance items. Um, not necessarily that you have to repair them unless you start renovating the building or touching the building, then things start to trigger. So I want to make sure that's clear, that not all this stuff has to be done. ADA compliance, there's rules that um, are followed. ADA is a law, it's required to be done, but there are. Uh, you can create accommodations and things like that to allow. The use of the building without being in that, you know, that zone of, of breaking the law, but so those are a little more critical in our, in our eyes at least. Um, and then doorknobs are not allowed by ADA. Um, and then some of the devices like light switches and stuff are above an ADA reach zone, which is forty-eight inches. Uh, and then finally, architectural, we talk about security. Um, I think everybody that walks in that main door, you know, there is a secure vestibule where you get buzzed in to get into the building. But in, in, in more modern design of schools, we would typically have a. Entrance vestibule that's secure. You have an outside line, you get buzzed into the secure vestibule. And then you would be able to interact with an admin person directly. Um, behind, you know, behind a pane of, of a lot of times bullet resistant glass or some sort of protective glass. Um, and that allows them to have another line of barrier for the building. And does, in this particular circumstance, there's that, you get through the vestibule, then you kind of have free flow. You have to walk by the admin and you can get into different areas. So. That's something that could be improved here. Um, and then um, limited lockdown capabilities. I think that set of doors right there can block you from the back area, but a lot of times we like to have. Uh, different zones that can be locked down in an event. You push a button and the doors close and they latch. Always allow egress. They always allow people out if there was an emergency, but keeping. Unwanted visitors out is, is the, uh, is the goal there. And then um, the playground fencing we talked about just didn't encompass that area, so you could have pests, uh, rodents and things get in there or. Students leaving and running in the road if you didn't, you know, if you, if they weren't, uh. If it just happened to run off there, and so those are, those are concerns to be aware of. Uh, fire protection, um, I think I noted earlier, there's no sprinkler system in this building. Um, that, those are the, that's kind of the number one way to help save lives in a, in a, uh, in a event of a fire sprinkler system. Um, so like, so plumbing wise, water heater is past its useful life. There's some mixing valves for water heater, heating water temperature and some of the faucets that is past its useful life. When I say past its useful life. It's, some of it's still operating, it still works. But it's, it could, it could fail at any moment. It's, it's, it's used up all of the expected lifespan that we would expect out of a. Certain device that I'm talking about. So yes, these items here may act, the water heater is still working. But it is past its useful life and maybe tomorrow it doesn't, you know, it, those, that's what I kind of refer to when I'm saying useful life. So the circulator pumps, it's past its useful life. Existing oil tanks are past their useful life. Um, existing water system is piped incorrectly causing significant pressure issues on the piping. Um, age of this, existing water piping is likely to have fittings that may contain lead. I want to be clear, that's may contain lead. Um, just because of the age of them. Um, and then existing plumbing fixtures are past their useful life. Some of them are, look pretty original to some areas of the building. Uh, po- uh, mechanically speaking, uh, there's some pumps, um, a couple of pumps that are past their useful life. Um, heating and ventilation in the attic space is not properly sized. I could tell you I spent a day up there when it was like eighty-something degrees and that was, that was, that was some warm space, but uh, but yeah, uh. Heating invent, some heating ventilation duct board was found, so this is a type of uh, more of a residential style duct. System where the air passes through and it, it can be fibrous. Um, so they usually, we use metal duct like this here. Um, so that would be, that, that need to be replaced. Um, existing oil fired, fired boiler is past its useful life, and I do have images on the right and you can see the boiler there. Um, on the top left. Um, there's no emergency boiler switches near the boiler room door for an emergency. Um, the oil storage tanks are beyond their useful life. We talked about that one. Heating and ventilating. Venting and horizontal fan coils are past their useful life. Existing fan coil units. Um, are past their useful life and there's no cooling in the library space. That's not an, uh, requirement, but a lot of times those are spaces where you would have some cooling. Some, some schools have all the entire building air conditioned. Electrical, um, their main distribution panel, so that's the, the major uh, distribution panel for electric through the building is increasingly obsolete. Um, a lot of electrical components um, like this. Over time will begin to become obsolete and it's getting harder and harder to find parts and pieces when you need them. And what we often hear is, um, yeah, I went on eBay to try to find a part for the panel or I found it, went on eBay and I. Had to bid on a piece to get these parts, so. That may not necessarily be happening directly yet, but that panel is reaching that age where you're going to start seeing that uh, up and coming. Um, and same with the older branch panels, so the panels like are remote from that main panel. Um, lack of hazard warning labels on distribution equipment. The generator is older and does not provide proper automation, so that's a manual generator that's out there. When it's in need to be, when the building needs to be runoff generator, I know the facility staff will start it and it'll run it out there. And they have, when the power comes back on, they have to drive back to the school to make sure it gets shut off, so that's not. A, oh, and if you want to, um, you have to, you have to test the generator often, you know, once a month or whatever it might be, once a week. And so they have to come over and make sure that's done weekly and, and a lot of times nowadays they're manual, I mean, automatic, so they'll. Do their processes automatically, turn on automatically, shut off automatically. Um, the exterior lighting, uh, is not full cutoff or dark sky compliant LED fixtures. Um, interior lighting does not have code required occupant sensors or controls. Some switching needs to be adjusted to meet ADA reach and heights. Um, and also the lighting is generally not LEDs in this building, so you're, you're using more, more. Energy consuming fluorescent type fixtures. Um, and the receptacles um, are, this is a more recent code, but uh, in schools. Any new receptacles you were to put in should be tamper resistant. If you were doing a major renovation project, you'd be swapping out the old, the old ones with tamper resistant. Um, and then emergency lighting is in, um, is not adequate for the school. Uh, fire alarm control panel is nearing the end of its useful life. Uh, proves challenging to find replacement parts. Another one of those things where you'd have, you might have to go on eBay and find parts or, or find a, a company that distributes older parts. Um, and, and certainly with any addition that you provide to the building, the fire alarm. That's here is limited to the amount of expansion that it would actually be able to uh, handle. And so that would be something you'd replace the whole fire alarm panel for those sort of scenarios. And there's no intrusion detection system. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Um, so again, that was our assessment of walking through the building and what our job is to do is to identify the things we see. That are things that you may want to address now, like things that are at the end of the useful life. These are things that you want to start thinking about replacing soon or budgeting to replace. Because they could go at any time. Um, but then we're also looking at the building, thinking about if we need to, based on the programmatic. Requirements of the ed spec and the study that we're doing, need to renovate or expand. What things might be triggered when we do that? So some of these code upgrades will be required depending on how much we need to renovate or expand. Um, so taking that and taking the educational um, uh, feedback that we got and, and looking at the things we were asked to study, we put together uh, several options. Um, and again, I want to emphasize this is a starting point, so there are four options that we're going to present tonight. Um, this first one, there's an A, B, C, and D. So option A is kind of the base model. And B and C are going to build or subtract off of A, and then D is kind of on its, on its own. But what we looked at. And I'll show you a bigger plan here in a minute, so you can see it, but wanted to highlight what the scope is that's included in this option. So option A, first we address building system upgrades. So this is upgrading the systems within this building and systems that are needed for, in addition, to be able to address. A new nurse and admin addition. Um, and other things that I'll go through on the right. So you can see all these systems on the left-hand side. They're related to sprinkler, plumbing, HVAC and electrical. I won't, I won't read through all of those. I think everybody, can everybody see that? Okay? Okay. Um, I'll go through what the scope is that we're adding and what we're renovating. Um, so. We are providing a new nurse and administration addition, and the reason that we're doing this in this option. Is we are trying to pull the admin out of the middle of the building. From a safety and security standpoint, we want to be able to see out into the site. We need to see what is coming towards the school so we can react. We need to see, is it a familiar face? Are these people that we know? Do we not know? Cause then you can react appropriately. This allows us then to have that secure vestibule right off, right? So it's visible from that admin area. They are the person checking in and checking out. We do a lot of things to kind of harden that area, but you won't perceive it as hardened. There's a lot of building materials today. Uh, for example, school guard glass that we put in our, in our vestibules. Takes six to twelve minutes to get through. So we're buying time before the emergency personnel can get here. Then we harden the wall from the vestibule to the admin. There's actually Kevlar we can put in the wall, but you wouldn't know it's there. So it's things that you don't perceive as bars and things like that when you think of. bars and things like that. When you think of security, it's still an open, welcoming, inviting environment, but it is safe and secure. So that's the type of thing that we would pull out to the front. So I don't know if this little pointer will work, but um, I will use maybe this. It's all right. Um, all right. Can you put the, the mouse on there? There you go. So that little orange box right, oops. I did, you did. Go back one. So the orange box on the lower right-hand side is where the admin would be. Um, we're going to provide interior renovations for a pre-K program classroom. All right, I'll do it, Jamie. Um, we will provide renovations for pre-K, uh, program and kindergarten classrooms. So what we're going to do is right behind the admin, we will have the youngest learners. We want to have them closer to the front office so that they have trusted uh, people there as well as if the parents are coming in to drop them off, they don't have to traverse all the way through the school. So in a larger plan in a minute, we will show you the three blue boxes right behind that orange are renovated spaces to house pre-K and two kindergarten classrooms. Option A also provides minor renovations to all the existing school spaces. Not already part of a, of a, what we call a major renovation. So we're going to be providing finishes, casework, doors, code and ADA compliance concerns. So addressing those items, kind of giving it a fresh look. Um, typically in schools, um, the statistics of school facilities and I have the acronym or the name not correct, but they look at generally when things need to be replaced in schools. And so usually your systems, like your HVAC systems, about every twenty years, they get to the end of their useful life. Some more. Um, your roof usually thirty plus or minus years. What they find is that buildings typically need a renovation about every twenty years, then at forty years, and then at sixty years, they generally see school buildings retired. But that's not always the case. So it's, it's just a statistic they have out there in general what happens. Um, so something to think about as we're going through these, some of these finishes are original to this building by providing, you know, new doors, new flooring, new paint. We can continue to extend the life of the building. So that's one of the reasons for doing that there. It also helps with something we call wayfinding. We start to use paint as well as graphics to help kids understand how they traverse through a school and where they belong in the school. Um, this option also provides an addition for two seventh grade classrooms, two eighth grade classrooms and one world language classroom. Those are programs that if the seventh and eighth were to come to this building, would need to be part of this building. Um, it also, uh, provides a music classroom and an art classroom in addition because we've moved them out of the building to renovate space for the kindergarten. Um, so they are part of the addition as well. It provides new renovated space for health. Some special education classrooms and expanded learning center, which is the library at the back of the space here. It breaks into a space next door to give that some more space for that. It provides a new cafeteria and kitchen addition. The committee went and visited a bunch of pre-K through eight schools and some of the feedback they got is that when you bring seventh and eighth grade into a pre-K through eight model, it's really important to not have a multi-purpose space, which, what is this space right here? This space provides your physical education. It also provides all your meals and your performance space. From a scheduling standpoint, when you start to have that many grades, it becomes very tough to be able to provide the number of units of physical education as well as all the lunches that you need to with those students. So what they heard and the feedback they gave back to us to look at was having a separate cafeteria in gym allows you to be able to schedule all of those programs within the school. So this option A has us, others, others don't. So you'll see that we've, 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 um, modified those, but this one has the new cafeteria and kitchen addition. This is set up in a courtyard scheme. You can see how the colors kind of go around in almost a rectangle and there's a white spot in the middle that is a outdoor courtyard. Um, the idea being that it allows natural light into those interior spaces as well as it provides a secure outdoor learning space for the students. Um, and this improves safety for onsite vehicular traffic. There are modifications to the parking area that are done as well as drop off um, in the lower, um, right corner. And it brings the core building spaces into the heart of the area of the school. So thinking about those spaces that all students use, having them in a central location. So your gym, cafeteria, art, music, they're all centrally located so that they can be, um, accessed, uh, by all the students. Okay. So this is option A. This is the base. Now, when we get into B and C, I'm going to talk about what they don't have that A does have. So B looks at everything we just talked about in A. Except there are no minor interior renovations to the existing school spaces except where required. There's no learning commons renovation and expansion. And there is no cafeteria and kitchen addition. Everything A had, except for those three, three things are removed. And option C, everything that A had, except for, we again, don't have the minor renovations. Um, interior renovations except for required. We do not have the expansion of the learning commons. We do not have the cafeteria and kitchen. We also do not have a pre-K program in option C. In option C, we renovate the existing north kindergarten space into the new admin nurse space and create a secure vestibule there. So essentially where that, um, uh, kindergarten pre-K area is right now becomes the admin. And we'll show you plans in just a minute. It'll make a little more sense. Option D, um, does not build off of A. Option D is kind of its own option. Um, it provides, uh, really it was focused on adding the seventh and eighth grade to the school. That was the real focus of that option. Um, and so it provides the seventh and eighth grade classrooms. It provides the world language classroom addition. It provides the new music and art edition because we've renovated, or because we, we need that and one of the spaces is used for something else. We provide a new nurse and administration addition and provides, uh, that new secure entrance vestibule and new electrical service in the new addition. It does not, so no existing school upgrades except necessary fire alarm upgrades. It does not have a pre-K program. And there's no cafeteria and kitchen addition. So those are the four options that we have started with. So we're going to look at option A and plan. Option A, um, you can see in the, uh, it addresses the building system upgrades. Um, over, I'm going to kind of point, it's probably easier if I go up there. I don't know if people in Zoom can, can see this, but it's going to probably be the easiest to walk it through this way. So I'm going to start here. This is your, your main entrance is back here right now. And then your admin is right here. We are adding on an admin and a nurse. We are renovating this into a pre-K and we're renovating these areas into kindergarten. This becomes health. That's your learning commons. It's expanded with a special education space built next to it. We have building system upgrades like we talked about. We have, uh, circulation revised in the front of the school. And then we have really renovations of, uh, materials and things throughout the existing school. From this line over is the addition. So you have your kitchen and cafeteria, music, art, eighth grade, seventh grade world language, and then building systems inside. So that is the plan for option A. Um, it looks at, um, about twenty-one thousand square feet of, uh, existing and the additions, I'm sorry, thirty-seven thousand square feet of existing twenty-one thousand of additions for just under sixty thousand square feet of space. All right, this is B and C. And so essentially the major difference here on B is that we are not doing the cafeteria kitchen addition. And we're not doing the renovations on the inside of the building. So you can see that that cafeteria kitchen addition has gone away. And we are doing, uh, we are not doing the renovations there. There is a, a flip with some of the, the renovated spaces with the kindergarten. Um, in this lower one, same idea, except we have now taken away the pre-K program. And then option D pretty much doesn't do any much to the existing building. We put fire alarm in that existing building. Something I will say is this does not address the systems in the existing building except fire alarm. So any of those systems that were at the end of useful life, this option does not address those in the existing. It really focuses on the addition. And it's providing the seventh, eighth scare, secure entrance vestibule, which we've now moved here to have even more line of sight. And then the site and traffic improvements. All right. So this is just a chart showing in each of the options, what is included. If it's included, it has a black dot. Just another way to summarize the differences. And then we have put together what we call rough order of magnitude total project costs. And so what this is, is the construction costs. So it's uh, materials, it's contractors', uh, cost to build it plus soft costs. Um, and so option A, rough order of magnitude cost for a concept design is somewhere around twenty-four to twenty-nine million dollars for option A. Option B is around fifteen to seventeen mil- million. Option C is around thirteen to fifteen and a half, and option D is around ten to twelve point five. Again, those are rough order of magnitude. This is looking at what the scope is and square foot cost, uh, for construction today. So pros and cons. Um, option A, um, the pros provides program needs and support spaces for middle school and pre-K. Uh, it provides improved building and site safety, uh, site, safety and security. It provides existing building system upgrades. Space for separate gym and cafeteria, improve building aesthetics and environment and reduce maintenance needs. The cons, it is at the highest cost here. The building, it has, uh, more building disruption, uh, because there's more impact throughout the building. So as we're doing the construction, we have to phase this and it will have, um, uh, impacts, uh, more impacts than some of the other options. Option B, um, so the same pros as A. Um, except there's no separate space for the gym and cafeteria and interior materials um, of existing building remain. The cons, uh, it's at the, in comparison to the others, moderate cost here. It does have, uh, building disruptions and phasing. Um, scheduling challenges with the gym and cafeteria, um, no longer being separate in this option. And mixed building environments and aesthetics throughout the school. Option C, same as B above, except for this now does not have the pre-K. And it has a lower cost from the options A and B, which is a pro. Um, cons, we do have building disruptions and phasing, um, scheduling challenges still exist because there's no separate gym and cafeteria, mixed building environments and no pre-K. And then option D provides this, um, needs and support for the middle school, seventh and eighth. Improve building and site safety, security. It has the lowest cost and least existing building construction and education disruption. And then the cons, again, the scheduling challenges for the gym and caf, mixed building environments and aesthetics, no pre-K. And the existing systems, billing systems will still need to be replaced and that's somewhere between four and five million dollars for those. Um, all right. So that was the overview of the options. Are we taking questions during? Somebody has their hand up. Okay, great. That's a yes. Or very well could be. So these are parts and pieces.
E, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't stand up, so. I feel like there's, when you say there's a need for seven to the eighth, the I know in the last meeting, someone mentioned why not have a new kitchen, but the cheaper option would be a gymnasium. The option D that does not include that, but that is needed because of the scheduling. So option E would be, you know, the second lowest cost in my opinion, if we kept the addition of the gym, gymnasium. So I just wanted to point that out.
That, that's a great observation. And what, like we said in the beginning, these can be sliced and diced and, and rearranged. So if we find that, hey, we really want to do option D, but we need that cafeteria kitchen addition for, for programming. That's something that we could plug in and make a sub option and Gotcha. No, very fair.
We're, we're going to shift gears and we're going to let her finish and then we'll get to everybody who has questions.
Appreciate letting our guest finish before we jump in with option E. They are doing the work that they were asked to do on the, on behalf of the, on behalf of the board, right? So just let, we'll finish the presentation.
Yep, absolutely. So next in the presentation, um, let's see here, we're going to get to refining the options. So this is really for um, the board, um, and really assessing the board's values and priorities. Um, and how you would rank the following priorities. Um, and this is something that we, we would look to do with all stakeholders, um, but start uh, with this panel here. And so there's really six, um, items up on the, the screen. Um, and it's really trying to gauge kind of where, where we go from here, right? So we have the priorities of building upgrades, addressed deferred maintenance, seventh and eighth grade programming at Mount Vernon Village School, pre-K program at Mount Vernon Village School, cafeteria kitchen, separate from the gymnasium, safety and security upgrades. Um, and if you're willing, we have a, a live poll. You guys can just give us feedback or we can have an open, open discussion, whichever you would prefer. So if we do the poll, we have a, a little Slido, um, thing here for the board to, to give us some feedback. Um, and the intent is, this is, this is again, just a tool, just a gauge, it's nothing binding. Um, but if you go to slido.com and you put in that number or you do the QR code, and then it will allow you to prioritize these and you pick um, number, the first one you pick is your highest priority, second is your second highest, so on and so forth. Um, and if anybody needs any help doing this, or you don't have a mobile device or, um, electronic device, I'm happy to lend you mine. It's open to the public too. My apologies. Absolutely. I perfect.
Presentation will be on our website at the end of the evening. It will be emailed out. It'll be put on social media. People have plenty of opportunities over the next few weeks to weigh in on this. And, uh, as much feedback as we can get. And, uh, so I just want to keep people, you know, in mind that we are going to be collecting all the data and all the information and working together to figure out, you know, what direction, if any, do we want to go in? So thank you.
And, and I do want to mention that we will leave, that we leave the poll open. Um, so we can leave it open for a couple of weeks and continue to collect feedback. So if there are people that aren't here um, that you want to tell that this is occurring and you want to have them provide their feedback, they can log on to uh, slido.com and put the number in there as well. Um, but it's a good way to give us, uh, a, a kind of a pulse on what people's thoughts are. What's that?
It's cool how that works.
It, it's great. It's great. Real, you know, live, uh, real-time feedback. Looks like we have ten folks in there right now, which is fabulous. Anyone need help with how it works or questions? Perfect. Yeah. So it looks like we've got fourteen, fifteen folks in there right now. Um, act, or fifteen folks have entered feedback already. Um, doesn't look like there's anyone active in it at this moment, but again, we'll leave this up. But what we're hearing from the fifteen people that have participated so far. First and foremost, you want to address the deferred maintenance. Um, you want to address safety and security upgrades, and those are kind of the, the leading to right now. Um, and then, uh, behind that is building upgrades. You can see it's changing as I'm talking. Um, but those, those top three are kind of at the top of the, the list of six right now. And then we get into pre-K, seventh and eighth grade cafeteria, kitchen and separate gymnasium. Again, that's from the sixteen people that have, have put their feedback in right now. So it'd be great to continue to collect, uh, more feedback. Good. Oh, we got another one participating right now. All right. So community outreach, um, so really the, for us, once we hear So community outreach, um, so really the, for us, once we hear from the board today as to what uh next steps and, and your thoughts. Um, our intent is to then outreach to teachers and staff as well as greater community. Um, our intent is to do similar polls, um, and also engage and get feedback. Um, so the more stakeholders we hear from, the better. Um, so we really make sure that whatever uh you guys decide uh is the direction to head, that it aligns uh with the community's values and goals. Um, and that is really the end of our presentation, um, and the next steps we just, we talked about, so I will pass it back to you guys.
Thank you very much. Nice presentation. I think you delivered to us on the, on the quick look, what we were looking for and asking for, for the first go round. Um, at this point, I would like to mention, Mr. Chamberlain says that you're gonna circle back, reconvene with the committee. And get feedback and kind of put things together at the next phase. Is that accurate? Okay. Steve, do we have a date for that yet?
No, we're, Tom's gonna schedule a time for the faculty and also a time for the community. Um, Tom's working on scheduling a time where Lisa and Jamie can come and talk to the faculty and get feedback from the faculty. As well as organizing a dedicated event just to this project for the community. Tonight's a board meeting as an introduction to the board, and then there'll be some times for the community uh at large to uh weigh in and understand.
Yeah. So at this point, we'll open up questions, comments uh for a reasonable amount of time as we have interest.
Um, Peter King, um, former board member and someone who's been involved in the building for a long, long, long time. Um, chairing various. Chairing various building committees and such uh over the years, um, and some experience. So I'm glad you had the.
I'm glad you had the slide on the values and priorities because uh, to be honest, the whole time I, I was looking at that saying, what are we doing here? We don't, I, I'm not sure what it is we're building for and we're coming up with designs or conceptual design, so. Uh, I'm glad we had that. I really think that's where we need to be is values and priorities. What are we, what are we planning here and what are the needs? As far as the, the detailed design, I think there's a couple of what I would consider some pretty significant flaws. Um, I didn't see anything in there about putting a new well in this building, has been struggling with one well since the history of the building. And in fact, the new admin building is on top of the well, so existing well would have to be replaced. Uh, the existing septic system would have to be replaced. I'm not sure where those would go. Uh, to be honest, um, we looked at this site probably 20 years ago with the possibility of putting a middle school in here. And we, at that point, we talked to the state and I think it's, is it 531 or something like 351? Or the, the ed rules for building instruction. Um, they said they would not approve this site for a middle school because it's not big enough. Um, you need a minimum of 14 buildable acres to add a seventh and eighth grade to a, to a site. And this is 14 acre property, most of which is not buildable. So I think that's where we need to start is what would the state allow us to do here? Um, what we looked at 20 years ago, we actually looked at some other lots in town as, as a possibility of buying property to add middle school. Um, I think another flaw that I saw in that was and this, this is um my experience on those committees. You can't just add a couple of classrooms and call it a middle school. Um, science classrooms, they'll require, um, you, you're gonna need a lot more special ed space. I know it's tight in the building already. I think to add a couple more grades. Um, and especially bigger kids, uh, you'd need space, so. Um, the reason that the state goes from um requiring two acres for an elementary school to 10 acres for a middle school is they require fields, they require playing fields. Um, that's gotta be part of the package. So adding a middle school, it's, it's not just add a couple of classrooms. It's a, it's a big deal. So I'm not sure how that was considered with the state requirements for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Pete.
Tom's got your bag. I do remember. Okay. All of the plans included grade seven and eight. Now, as I understand it, when we first approved the warrant article, we were looking for costs for having grade seven and eight here in Mount Vernon as opposed to the cost of sending them to Amherst. I hope that you are going to give us the comparison because if it costs us three times more to have them at home, maybe it isn't wise. Also, I, they seem to have done an excellent job on what the building needs. If the board decides that going forward, we shouldn't bring seven and eight in. I hope they look at the cost necessary to keep this building in good operation. And that is a separate number which was not presented in any of these.
First of all, the board is not going to make that decision whether we move forward with seven and eight. It's gonna be you folks, the, the taxpayer. Absolutely. And that's why, and that's why we're here, but the board is not gonna make the final decision on that, so. Um, and as far as the deferred costs of, of keeping the building in, in check, we, we are monitoring that every meeting with Roger, with Tom. What, what needs to be looked at? Obviously, this is a, a big list that was presented tonight. Um, we're aware of things like the well and, and certain other things that need to be taken care of, but I'll give you folks, the taxpayers, credit for approving warrant articles year after year after year. So that we can chip away at these projects that some of them are pretty substantial. So that's why we have a, a capital reserve fund where we build it up to 200, $300,000. And then we put a new roof on. So as a board, I feel we've done, not just since I've been on it, but previous boards have done a nice job of attacking things that need to be fixed and repaired. So we don't have a major crisis here. So excellent points. I just wanted the opportunity to kind of set the table a little bit, but thank you, Eileen. Anybody else? Questions, comments, thoughts?
Uh, Bonnie Andrews, Three Bakers Way. I was also under the impression that tonight's presentation would give us some numbers so that, that we could understand. Uh, what would we be leveraging at Amherst when we go to negotiate the contract? So that was my hope, um, not to leave AMS necessarily for the beautiful version A. But to be able to go down and say, we might leave you because we just found out that it is apples to apples. So pre K is not apples to apples, taking that out of the options. And just strictly looking at seventh and eighth grade is what I thought we were doing. So when is that contract going to be negotiated? When do we have to have all our ducks in a row?
When is that? 20th, next year?
I think there's uh another year and then there's a five year option. Those are the two options in the contract.
So we have one year as a community to decide and then a short period of time to negotiate.
So there's already in the contract, another uh option for five more years?
Okay. So we could simply say, yep, we need a little more time to make this decision because one year sounds really quick. You know, just hearing these numbers tonight, little overwhelming, but if we whittle it down, you know, like this is what it is. But when you're going to negotiate that contract, it's just for seventh and eighth grade. So the idea that we're getting all, you know, these additional wonderful things, um, and it's gonna cost this much. I'm just trying to understand how we go to Amherst and negotiate. Which one of those options is exactly what we're getting at Amherst? Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
And all that additional information, you know, how many teachers at X cost of salary and all the other add-ons are something that we will get as close to once we get to a point where we know what you folks want to do as far as a building. We, we fully understand that it's not just building five classrooms right behind me and here we go. There, there's a lot, a lot on the table here, a lot to be worked through. And this is just, I won't say the, the first stage because we've been working on this now for, for months and months and months. So it is, it's a long process and Bonnie, your, your point is valid. A year probably is a pretty tight timeline to make a, a final, final. But we, we had to start someplace and we were charged with that warrant article to do what we're doing. And it may not be as moving as fast as some of our community wants it to, but uh I think we're doing the right due diligence on, on all the aspects of the project because it is a, it's a big decision. Steve, do we have anybody online that would like to ask a question?
Any hands up, sir.
Okay. So once again, this, this presentation will be posted to the SAU website, the Mount Vernon website. Um, and, and also the polling will stay open as well to other community members can participate. And once we determine when the next meeting and the, with Harriman for a community input. And, and the next phase, we'll, we'll publish that out so that everybody knows.
Bonnie, again, one more question. Um, how about salaries and admins? I have no idea how many new administrators you need for the addition, if it's A, B, C, or D, and then number of teachers and those costs. Because the investment um to adding to the building is, you know, wonderful, but like what would it cost to run? Because that's also kind of apples to apples. Like what we pay tuition is salary, right? And, and the running of those buildings, hopefully not the maintenance of AMS that we have no equity in. But that moving forward, if we were gonna bring all of it here, what would that mean for salaries, benefits? Those numbers are important too, I think. So I didn't hear any of that tonight. Is that another committee that looks at that once we move forward?
Not a committee. It's basically work that Steve, you know, I'll say Steve and Amy. Um, we have had casual conversation because again, we realize it's gonna be headcount and bus routes and potentially new athletic fields and other things that are gonna be required by bringing seven, eight here. So I think we did have.
Us that out. We did have, when we reported to the board, the number of teachers this would require. Um, but when we presented the ed specs, and I, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but there was no additional administration based on adding seventh, eighth grade where we are in the school enrollment at this point. But we do have, as you said, some teachers and we can cost it out and do the whole um cost between what we pay in tuition and what would be paid all in with between bond. You know, a, a, a bond plus the operating costs. We're happy to do that and that's be the next stage. So thank you.
Jill Weber, I don't know how we can make a decision about the options without having the information about what the cost of one school is of having school in Mount Vernon or having it in Amherst. I think that almost has to come beforehand and then we can make a choice.
Thank you.
I'm Anne Dodd and I think we're missing a piece of the puzzle here, and that is whether it makes sense for our seventh and eighth graders to continue here or not. And that was the beginning of this process and that has been sort of uh pushed to the floor and we have now this scope creep that we just had very difficult time approving $2 million for a project in town to look at the numbers that you're talking about without some sort of understanding that it's educationally appropriate to bring seventh and eighth graders back here or not is a piece that people are going to want to see.
Thank you, Anne. Uh, Steve, we have somebody online, you said?
Oh, her hand's down now, but it was up.
Okay. And I'll defer to my fellow board members. Does anybody leave? Andrew, Jess, want to speak or comment? Well, I don't know. We'll find out.
Um, Aaron Kaplan. I'm actually not a Mount Vernon resident, um, from Amherst. Um, I was invited by one of your members. Thank you for the invitation to speak on a matter that I had emailed the board about. Uh, do you guys need to do anything to allow me to speak or do I just proceed?
And the board would uh have to vote to allow a, a non-resident to speak.
Do I?
This is not.
Yeah. Oh, is this public? I just walked in. I apologize. So this is, this is a not, a not public comment?
It's not public. You're just fielding some questions.
Just taking questions.
Oh, just taking questions? I think what I uh, do you feel what I have to say is more appropriate now or probably public endpoint? Thank you. Thank you.
Um, so. So again, thank you to our guest from Harriman for the presentation.
That's all. I was gonna thank them for the presentation. Um, the, I look forward to continuing to work with you because we really want to dive into these options more. As ever, as people have requested, we're gonna take a lot of look at the numbers of being able to compare one thing to another, but also you, you've given us a whole lot of information about what our school might need. Uh, what maintenance might look at as some people have called out. Um, uh, but we might want to price out some of the, some of the other options there. Um, so, you know, I, I look forward to public input and I look forward to talking with you uh in the coming weeks and, and kind of looking and piecing together those options. So thank you very much for your presentation. That, that actually looked um very good, very interesting.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is an update from our principal, Mr. Leclater. Tom?
This is the largest audience I've ever had for a principal's report. I thought everyone was here for this, so thank you for coming. Um, all right. So uh, Tom Leclater, principal here at the school. Um, it's an honor to start another year. We uh, we've had a good start to the year. And uh, again, I, I spoke with um, uh, the board and Mike and as uh, as we began the year. I truly feel uh very honored and um fortunate to be here uh with our community uh of Mount Vernon. Um, we start our school year with a tradition and it's very fitting that uh as we are a community, we're an MV community, but uh, NVBS community, but also an MV community. We have the library, fire, police, uh, school board, uh, superintendent Barry, uh, Ms. Jennings. Uh, number of folks involved uh in our greeting the students on the first day. So uh, we had a great opening. Um, PTA has been very involved as always in uh hosting some events to start out the year. We had our ice cream social. We're gonna have bingo night coming up. Uh, just a great way to get the community together. What better way than to serve ice cream on a hot night? Uh, it was a great night. We had a great turnout as always. And then we had our open house. Uh, not long after that, another great turnout. Um, more than enough parking as always, um, and a, and a great, a great opening to the year. So I want to thank our staff. Um, we have a lot happening and I am trying to keep this brief, so I'm gonna try to move through this a little bit. But um, I just want to talk for a minute about uh the priorities for this year. So in aligning to Superintendent Barry's framework and the team's framework and the work that we're doing at the building level uh across the whole SAU, I feel that uh Mount Vernon is very equipped uh to do this work this year around literacy, around math and around, um, we've talked about social emotional learning, but I'm gonna say climate and culture, which is building community for our students, for our staff, for you, our community to feel part of uh and, and really hands-on with what we're doing here. So real quickly with literacy, we have um some resources that we're using. We have some old resources that we're using. And really it's about personalizing literacy for our students. We want all of our students to be uh confident readers and confident writers as they uh graduate us at the end of sixth grade right now. Um, and so we are very excited about the work over the summer, the work leading into this year and the work that continues through. Um, and so we are very excited about the work over the summer, the work leading into this year and the work that continues through this year. Um, to that end, we also, in one of our goals, want to make, uh, we want to make reading fun. If you're a parent, you know, we have a million minute reading challenge, million minutes, we're up to 28,000 minutes at this point. Um, it sounds a little crazy, but we have building boys and a lot of rah rah about reading right now. Uh, very excited about that. Our new librarian, part of that, and Dr. Home, our our literacy specialist. Uh, on the math front, um, as you well know, uh, Charlene Brown, Mrs. Brown is a celebrity here. And, uh, she is not only pulling out those students that need math support, pushing in, supporting teachers, supporting students. And, uh, and this year we have some math challenges to start the year. Very excited about the number. We have many, many students, part of this, uh, that have, um, and it it can be any student that can uh, go after these challenges. So that's been very exciting. We also are bringing back, if you've been here for a while, you know, we had math houses, you're familiar with that. Uh, Charlene is a big Harry Potter. We kind of brought that element in and, uh, we're bringing that back this year. So I'm excited about that. So excited about the ongoing work around math. And then, um, on the social, emotional and the culture and climate front, you might know I am wearing M V V S socks, some new swag, uh, all staff now have, uh, M V V S socks. We kicked off the year. I stole, I stole something from the Boston Celtics. They were pretty good last year. They won the championship and, um, uh, their mantra last year was it's different here. And I started the year off with our staff talking about what is different about Mount Vernon? What is different about M V V S? And it was, uh, it was an exciting conversation to kick off the year. Um, it is different here. It is different here because we are truly growing in the same direction. I feel like our staff is. I feel like our community is supportive of us, uh, ongoing. We had a P T A meeting last night. I'm excited about the plans for this year and this fall as we, uh, move toward, uh, uh, winter wonderland, which is our our big holiday event, um, and and a lot of the other plans that are happening around climate and culture. So very excited about that. Um, we begin each day with morning meeting. Morning meeting is a great way for our students, our staff to connect and to build community in the classrooms. And, uh, as you have maybe seen through our goals on the website, uh, our goal is to, um, graduate students from M V V S who are not only academically prepared, but prepared as, uh, humans and, um, able to be confident, uh, as they are, as amazing people. And, uh, we are fortunate to work with them every day, our students. Uh, finally, we had a dot day celebration. You may have never heard of dot day. It sounds a little real. The dot is a book written by Peter Reynolds. Picture book. It's about, it's a growth mindset book. We talk about growth mindset. We talk, uh, a lot about that here, that we are all on a journey of learning and that we want to take students from where they are day one and move them to their individual personal goals by the end of the year. And, uh, the growth mindset dot day is a celebration of that. So, um, Ms. Christie, everybody got on board with that. We, uh, shared some pictures out. Uh, it was a great event. So, um, thank you, um, Mr. Barry for the time and, um, and School Board, thank you for your support. Looking forward to a great year and off to a great start. Thank you, Tom. Great job as always. Uh, any questions or comments from my fellow board members for Mr. Leclater? Seeing none. Thanks again, Tom. Um, next up, we have our budget presentation. We will take a 20 second break right now. We're going to get right into the budget presentation if if people would like to stay for that, my friends. First draft. I'll do the first of the big, you want to hold a microphone or you want?
Do this. You can take this.
I can't hold it.
All right. I think we're close. I think we'll be all right there. We can start there. Um, so I'm going to kind of kick this thing off and I want to remind everyone when we speak about this is draft one. This is draft one of the budget. It it's way early and I was talking, I was at a Title IX training today, uh, with a bunch of superintendents and some of them are very I'm jealous because some of the school districts don't have draft one until November. Some of them don't have draft one to December. Sometimes budget committees don't get it to January. But we start way early and that's a good thing for us so we can get the conversation going. And one of the things I want people to know is a lot of thought and a lot of intentionality goes into the budgets. We want it to be a reflection of the values of the town of Mount Vernon, the values of the staff members and for us putting to a a budget together is something that we take very seriously. Amy and her team of people do a great job, the teachers and the staff, where it starts and as it kicks up to us, do a great job of trying to provide, you know, a quality education that is rigorous and demanding and challenging, but also a school that is inclusive and supportive. Um, and I think Mount Vernon does a very good job of doing that. So I'm very lucky. Uh, Steve, next slide. Couple of things to keep in mind. School budgets, highly regulated, all at the federal level, at the state level, at the local level. And, uh, we are very aware of that as we get into to this. A collective bargaining plays a role into it. So one of the things that we talked about when we budget in S A U 39 and and Mount Vernon School District is part of that. We get into trying to connect it to the framework of progress. And if anyone's ever seen that, that's what drives our our budget process. It's our goals. And so as we get into it, you can't see it. This will be on presented on on the website as well. But the mission is to engage, challenge and support. But here's the unique thing that we do and we expect. We expect high academic achievement, but also caring for the whole student. And the framework kind of outlines this, like our goals is to improve literacy, to improve mathematics, to expand instructional time because we think time with quality teachers focusing on core subjects gets us where we want to be. We talk about trying to get people better at their craft and and the teachers here are so dedicated to that. So we're very lucky, but our budget reflects these things. The fifth one is partnering. I say that all the time. And I have to keep, and you know, I keep reminding people as we work, like we work on behalf of the the community of Mount Vernon. As superintendents, we support our administrators and our teachers. And, you know, we partner quite a bit and collaborate quite a bit. And one of the things that I always told people is everyone's doing their best. Everyone's trying to figure out the best way. Everyone's trying to work with each other and people who work most closely with me know this. I'm I'm really big on treating people really well, establishing trust with people, being responsive to questions, being kind. That's big for me. And, uh, budget process is always tense. And and and, you know, people are just always wondering why it is, what it is. And I always want to keep that in mind as we partner on the budget process and partner everything. And then the the sixth one is like the facilities. We're constantly trying to, we have a good facilities director in Roger Preston, and we're we're trying to create appropriate, you know, improvement plans, right? And, uh, you know, C I Ps, so we can make sure that our our we're planning for two years out, five years out, 10 years out, 20 years out, and and Roger does a good job with that. And this budget reflects that. So with that said, I believe I'm turning this over to, uh, uh, Amy in a second, but you saw right there, Tom has aligned, he just reviewed these, but he's aligned his goals to the framework, which the other school districts have and schools have. And so it's been funny, I went into South Hegan, we're all kind of moving in the same direction. And you'll see us working towards these things reflected in the budget. So please keep that in mind. Please keep in mind this is draft one. And, uh, Amy, we'll let you roll. It's very echoey in here, Amy. It's a big room.
We're usually not in here until deliberative. Thank you. Okay. So, yep, we can just go, um, head right to the executive summary. Okay, so, um, the F Y 26 draft one operating budget is a 1.4% increase or $89,992 over the F Y 25 adopted budget. The F Y 26 default calculation is actually 1% lower or $65,220 than the F Y 25 operating budget, primarily due to a reduction in student service costs. The default is essentially the same as the F Y 25 budget adjusted up or down for contractual requirements. Student services is one of those requirements that in this case is being adjusted down. The difference between the F Y 26 default and the F Y 26 proposed is $155,142 or 2.4%. So because the default is 1% lower than the F Y 25 budget, the difference between the default and the proposed includes that 1% different difference as well as the 1.4% increase from the F Y 25 to 26 operating budgets. So there are some slides later in the presentation that will walk us through these calculations. I know it can be a little confusing. Um, and just as a reminder, this calculation excludes the special warrant articles that were passed in F Y 25 to provide a true apples to apples comparison between the current year and the proposed year operating budgets. Slide. So we actually just received our rate changes for health and dental this morning. Um, and worked hard to incorporate them into the, uh, the budget file and this presentation. So this year, Health Trust is not providing a guaranteed maximum rate at budget time and the actual rate in the spring, but is instead providing the actual rate right now in October during budget time. So the rates that were provided, um, to us, they were also provided by plan, which is different. Typically, it's just a percentage across the board. So they were 13.3% for the Access Blue Five Plan, 16.8% for the site of service, which is an H R A plan, 12.4% for Luminos, which is the H S A plan, and a 5% increase in dental. As far as New Hampshire retirement rates, this past July, they set their rates for teachers at 19.23%, which is a reduction, um, of 0.41%. And for non-teachers, a rate of 12.75, which is a reduction of 0.78%. Uh, it should be noted that the M V E A contract is currently being negotiated at it as it expires at the end of this year. So the wages for staff included in this contract remain flat for for teachers rather. Um, there is one modest recommended staffing increase also for a facilities tech technician um, from a 0.75 to a full-time position. Uh, there is a net reduction in student services, um, as I mentioned, due to changes in the needs of the student population, uh, primarily due to a reduction, the the reduction is a, uh, paraprofessional, uh, special education, transportation and other related services. So enrollment, um, based on the most recent N E S D E C projections that were completed in the spring of 2024, enrollment is expected to increase over the coming years. We will receive an updated projection this fall and will reflect those changes in future budget drafts. Staffing levels, the number of teachers is not expected to change with two per grade level. Included on this slide is the N E S D E C projected enrollment, the actual enrollment as of October 1, and the N E S D E C projected for F Y 26. And as you can see, the total number of students is projected to increase by six and the ratio of students to teachers increasing, uh, from 7.1 to 7.6 with a range of 16 students to 18.5 per classroom. There are no changes in the certified staffing proposed this year or for next year as we're staying with the current model uh, for specials that was put in place two years ago. For our non-certified staffing, um, as I mentioned, there we're projecting the need for one less special education paraprofessional and looking to increase that custodian to a full-time position. So the budget is broken down into, um, multiple categories to provide a more manageable way to analyze the changes from year to year. Uh, most of these categories are affected by increases in health and dental. Um, but beyond those increases, just to provide some highlights, I'll go through the different sections. Uh, technology, this is the largest percent increase primarily to get back on track with device replacements for students and staff. So laptops over the last few years, this budget has been cut. And at this point, um, we're recommending getting back on track with that replacement cycle. For facilities, this includes utilities, maintenance costs, repairs, preventive maintenance. Uh, most of the increase in this budget is for, um, a compressor that an outdoor A C compressor, um, that has been put in the budget and removed. Um, I definitely last year, I'm not sure if it was the year before. I think it was just last year. Um, and as well as there is an increase in utilities, uh, primarily electricity. Administration, a large part of the increase in administration is the projected increase in the S A U budget apportionment. Um, the increase is about $23,000. That amount is still a projection as it is based on, uh, some data that we need to be posted by the, um, by the D O E. Other increases include wage increases for non-union administrative staff. Food service has a small increase. Um, as a reminder, the goal uh, of the food service expenditure budget budget is to be offset by revenue. Curriculum, this is where the salary and benefits for most staff will show up for this year. The increases are due primarily to health and dental as the wages for the M V E A are at status quo. Other increases in this category include a request for library, uh, replacement furniture. Uh, this is part of a long-term plan to replace outdated and end-of-life furniture over multiple years. Other increase increases include materials and workbooks to implement a new literacy program next year and interactive display replacements in classrooms. For student services, um, as I discussed, the reductions are due to uh, the one less paraprofessional and a net reduction in related student services based on need. Transportation, this is the biggest change in the budget, uh, which is primarily due to the expected decrease in special education transportation costs, uh, based on expected student needs. I'd say at the end. If you don't mind. Um, so the default calculation, so this slide shows how the default is calculated. Uh, the default is the amount of the operating budget from the previous year reduced um, or increased by debt service contracts and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget and by salaries and positions that have been eliminated in the proposed budget. So to calculate the default, the F Y 25 warrant articles are removed from the F Y 25 budget and increases or decreases, um, are applied. So the contractual salaries and benefits amount is due mostly to health and dental increases for union staff as that is a contractual obligation. The S A U apportionment increase is a contractual obligation that increases the default. As I said, this amount is still, um, to be determined and will be updated officially following the S A U budget public hearing at the end of November. Uh, the tuition to the Amherst School District is not up significantly as that has stabilized based on cost per pupil and the number of students. Food service is down by a small amount as the director, uh, trimmed her software and paper supplies budget a bit. Um, and as discussed, student services and special education transportation is projected to decrease significantly based on student needs and accounts for the largest change from the F Y 25 budget to the F Y 26 default calculation. So this slide shows, uh, proposed items at risk. So the difference between the F Y 26 default and the F Y 26 budget are the items that are typically deemed to be at risk for not having funds available. So this includes the salary and benefit costs for, um, for non-union staff. It would be the increase. It would be the increase uh, technology uh, as discussed, the devices for staff and students. For curriculum, this includes the library furniture, the literacy program costs and the interactive displays. For facilities, uh, this is the increased cost in utilities, even though we will have to pay those um, increases regardless. And we'll just have to uh, make other adjustments um, in terms of costs and cutting other items. Um, this also includes the cost of the compressor. Um, an increase in three thousand dollars for the food service transfer from the general fund, should there be a shortfall in that budget. And then um, some other miscellaneous um, increases and decreases that amount to about a seven hundred dollar variance. So the total difference is the one hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred forty-two dollars. So this slide just provides a visual representation of the composition of the budget. Um, and as expected, most of the budget is comprised of salaries and benefits and the tuition to the Amherst School District. So now I'm just going to give a, a brief overview of the facility's long-term uh, planning and funding plan. So this long-term capitals, capital needs analysis plan was started uh, many years ago and has worked well for the district. Uh, Roger Preston, our director of facilities, and I are working on revising this plan to update both projects and funding. So this grid shows the projects and proposed funding plan through FY thirty-two. Um, and just a note, it is still in draft form. There are a number of smaller projects planned, including tree removals and door replacements, as well as larger projects, including boiler and pump replacements, a fire alarm system upgrade, a water system upgrade, HVAC unit um, replacements. And just as a reminder, the, the goal of this plan is to always maintain at least a hundred thousand dollars in the fund in case of an emergency issue. So I'm going to also go over briefly the reserve funds that are currently held um, but for the Mount Vernon School District. So there are currently five funds um, that were established. And this chart shows the balance of these funds and the proposed contribution as well of the recommended source of funding. So the balance of the property maintenance fund is two hundred twenty thousand dollars and a contribution um, from the unassigned fund balance for fifty thousand dollars is recommended to support the capital needs plan. Uh, the recommended contribution for the Special Education Trust Fund for this year is thirty thousand dollars, also from the unassigned fund balance. The student services budget has been decreased as we discussed and budgeted as tightly as possible this year. The recommendation is to add to this fund to ensure there are sufficient funds in the event of unanticipated costs. The health, health insurance fund was created two years ago and the recommendation is a ten thousand dollar contribution from unassigned fund balance for unanticipated health and dental insurance election changes. The technology fund was created last year. And in accordance with the three-year technology plan, the recommended contribution is fifteen thousand dollars also from the unassigned fund balance. We are not recommending a contribution to the tuition contingency fund this year. Uh, we do continue to keep an eye on enrollment increases and this may be something that is recommended at the, in the future, but not at this time. Uh, we're also not uh, projecting a need for a contingency fund for unanticipated expenses at this time. And this is just a summary of the proposed warrant articles, including the budget and the four uh, special warrant articles. And then finally, the budget review process and next steps are included on this slide. So unfortunately, so far, the Mount Vernon Budget Committee has not been officially formed as there currently are only two members. Um, I know the moderator is working very hard to find a third member um, to have a full committee. If another member is fine, then they will um, need to officially meet to organize and assign subcommittee members. And the rest of the schedule is provided here as well. Yep, just taking any questions. Yep.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions or comments from the board?
So I will need you folks to um, be assigned to the different subcommittees. Even though there isn't a budget committee at this time, it would make sense to be assigned um, in case they do, they are able to form.
Okay.
What was that?
Uh, assigned to the committee within the budget committees. If we don't have a full budget committee, we should, we need to step in and participate.
Um, so I had one question. Um, the contingency fund, that was a special uh, state law that we followed last time that we put on the, is a warrant article. I thought that was only good for one year, so wouldn't we need to re-up that this year?
If you, yes, the, those funds will be returned um, to the taxpayer for next year. So if you wanted to do that again, you could, but it would need to be a, a new warrant article.
Okay, so you recommend we don't do that again?
Correct.
Okay. And actually I had one more thing. So we wanted to, proposed was to increase some amount for technology. Um, but we also have a technology reserve fund. Um, so it sounded like the things that you were asking for would, would be what I would expect to come out of a technology reserve fund. So I assume there's some plan, so could, could we see that at some point, what the three-year plan is for technology?
Yep, the technology um, uh, three-year plan is as part of the budget file.
Okay.
It was presented last year and it's, it's uh, presented this year as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, next up on our agenda is the update from our superintendent, Mr. Barry.
Thanks, Pete. So just a couple of quick things. Had a great opening, you know, Tom did a good job talking about the opening in, at MV, super, super pleased with things. Um, kids are happy, staff's working really hard, and superintendent couldn't be more pleased. So that's real reflection of the people in the building, Tom. You can feel it when you walk in. So uh, appreciate that. Uh, please know we have a uh, safety grant that we received and uh, you know, we're putting that, you know, money and energy towards improving our access control and emergency learning in the, in the school and we'll continue to update you as, as the board as we go along with that. Uh, it's widely known that we're um, have major concerns SAU-wide about transportation uh, and the ability of butlers to fulfill the contract. However, Mount Vernon students, they have not, in the community has not felt the brunt of that. That is, that is reserved for Amherst at this moment in time. Uh, but we are working to remedy that and, and that is a real thing. And then our long-term planning committee has been uh, put together uh, SAU-wide and we appreciate uh, Leaf for you joining us on the, on the subcommittee of that. And, and uh, we will begin that work as we continue uh, to think about the multiple options and, and you know, how we want to move forward with the framework. Uh, there'll be opportunities for input from uh, staff, administration, community members. And uh, we'll get more of that as we get into this. So a few things happening uh, in Mount Vernon. Uh, with that said, I don't have anything else right now for the superintendents, but I'll take some questions or anything, if anyone has anything at this time.
Everybody all good on the board? Uh, so we are up to item number ten on our agenda for this evening, which is public input number two of two. So I would open it up to our guests tonight in, in live person uh, to ask questions of Mr. Barry, uh, Ms. Facey on the budget, or even Mr. Lecliter on his presentation about the, the school.
Uh, just a quick question about technology. That slide um, showed that it was a thirty-seven percent increase, so kind of a big driver of the increase in the budget. Is there any opportunity for grift, gifts, grants or donations? Um, Amy saying that there's a three-year plan is like amazing grant writing information, right? I didn't know we had a three-year plan for technology and you have someone like Andrew on your board who maybe uniquely is interested in the technology element, but sounds like something, I don't know if we buy all our technology as SAU thirty-nine and we kind of like bargain that way. Like, are you buying it in bulk and everybody gets a cut? So if we were successful in securing a grant, does that hurt you? So I'm just thinking of um, opportunities to reduce the budget and, and technology just seems like a want and a need. But great writing, grant writing opportunity, maybe.
Thank you.
Aaron Kaplan, Amherst, New Hampshire.
We're going to have to take a vote to allow you to speak, so I'd ask my fellow board members for a yea or nay. And against your name, sir, I didn't catch it, I'm sorry.
Aaron Kaplan.
Uh, question to the board to allow Mr. Aaron to speak. Leaf? Yes. Mr. Stokinger? Miss Henkley? And I vote yes. So four yeses, I will say that although we're allowing it tonight, we welcome the input. Uh, I would, as a board member, not make this a standard practice to have outside taxpayers and community members to speak. But you're welcome to speak, you get three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the time. Uh, so I will be respectful of your time and just get right to it. I did just recently send you all an email uh, regarding your discussions you had tonight about potentially withdrawing from the Amherst School District at the middle school level. Uh, our communities have been bound for over thirty years uh, in a shared school system. Um, and I have some concerns that uh, a viable option might very well be being overlooked. Uh, so you did have a committee that you formed and they identified multiple options, pros and cons of each option, and the first one uh, was to potentially stay in Amherst. And it listed uh, an awful lot of cons. Every single one of them tied that back to really one point. Uh, you do not have a voice on the Amherst Board. You don't, essentially, a grievance is uh, American as apple pie, tax aid, no taxation without representation. So you are forced, you're not forced, you could always withdraw from the district, but you are liable to pay into the Amherst school system uh, without having a say. Um, so to potentially mitigate that, you are considering pulling out and building your own uh, or adding on to the school system here, which has its own share of positives as well as cons. But the cons are numerous there as well, which is a shared concern of mine at the Amherst level. We might very well have our fifth graders, sports and other programs stripped away from them. If they are uh, unilaterally moved from the middle school to the elementary school. So I share your concerns about, you are concerned about a loss of socialization, sports, the capital cost of developing your own buildings here, staffing, extracurriculars that you simply can't do with the size of the school system here. So that has its own share of pros and cons as well. However, your committee did look at the annex, but did end that discussion with this need, this needs further exploration, I believe is what it was um, stated, or hasn't been fully explored. Uh, and all I ask uh, that this board do is to explore that uh, for essentially the following reasons. So your first concerns um, on the first option of uh, sticking with Amherst, you have a seat at the table in Amherst, uh, and Sahigan Board Level. And so you have a direct say in how your money is spent, which potentially wipes out every single con of staying in the Amherst School District, while at the same time returning the socialization, sports and all the other benefits that you receive in Amherst. It is a mutually beneficial relationship that we have had for over thirty years. I've seen wonderful relationships with students from both towns. We, we, we should explore this option uh, before making a drastic move of building here or pulling out completely from the middle school system. Um, also uh, you would be using pre-existing well-underutilized space in the annex, which could very well serve as a junior high model. And there have been some detractors from that model that have said, well, this is developmentally inappropriate. However, um, of the top ten would be middle school, to compare apples to apples, middle school, there are several junior high models in the top ten in the state. I'm almost done.
Okay, I'll give you thirty more seconds.
Perfect. Um, so junior high model, essentially grade seven through eight, number five in the state, Wyndham Middle School, number seven, Ross Largio Middle School, to number ten, Hollis Brookline, New Hampshire, honorable mention, and number eleven, profile junior high. These are some of the highest performing districts in the state. They are right next to us. The proof is in the pudding. This is a viable, wildly successful model in other towns. It is something that um, all these boards, uh, Sahigan, Amherst and Mount Vernon should sit down, discuss everything, because I see a lot of uni, model decisions being made.
That's all the time.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking. Uh, do we have any need tonight for a non-public session?
No, sir.
And I, I'm sorry, do we have to go back to not, um, public input? Do we have anybody with their hand raised?
No hand raised, no need for non-public.
Okay.
Uh, or do you have one more coming to the mic?
I'm Dawn and I just want to say I appreciate all the labor that you're putting into this. And I especially appreciate the way this school is kept up. It's a prideful moment every time I walk in the door. The staff you have taking care of the facility is excellent.
Thanks, Anne. Amy, did you have, you wanted a minute? No, you're good? Oh, okay. So uh, that wraps up our meeting. So item number twelve, meeting adjourned. I need to uh, take a motion in a second. Second, all those in favor? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming and keep your eyes peeled for the date when we are going to reconvene with the harem and people.